You guys are good to go.
Oh, good. Thank you. We'd like to call the meeting to order. Please rise, join me in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roles?
Certainly Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilman Iacilli.
Here.
You zoom.
Councilman Pell.
Here.
Councilman Martel.
Here.
We're going to start the work session today with a presentation on an update on the Riverside redevelopment plan. And we've got Janice Shear, our Town Planning and Development Administrator, Paul Knight, and Elizabeth Dillon from Historical Concepts. Come on up and join us.
Good morning.
Got some light reading for everybody.
It's a bit skinny of that glass book I have somewhere. She's got to check them out.
Yeah, they come here. We have a stamping system for records management, which my stamp I just took downstairs. So I'm just going to write copy on these. Thank you.
This is also the, it looks like this is.
We'll post it on the website for anyone else who wants to see it after. And it's on the screen now, too.
One for Michael.
Put it with his budget book?
I'll lug all of your stuff back. All thousand pages of it.
One thousand, one hundred and eight, she told me. Colleen.
There we go.
Have to go on vacation after that.
See if it works now with the remote.
Well, we're so excited to hear about what you've come up with for Riverside Hamlet.
Sure.
Technical moment here with the advancing of the state. Is it working?
She'll advance it a little.
Oh, thank you. So, thank you, and we're joined by Paul and Elizabeth. They'll go through, you know, as you know, we've been busy working on the sewer district, the funding, getting all of the money to get to our, we're at thirty percent design for the sewer. You'll be hearing a presentation from Arcadis on October 16th about that. So we'll talk more about that. But what people sort of get bored with, like boring sewer talk, and want to just be like, what's it going to mean for us? What is it going to look like and feel like? And that's where Paul and Elizabeth have been our design professionals, trying to say, how is this going to translate into real life, into something we can all hopefully agree that is beautiful and sustainable and equitable in terms of, you know, it's not all one parcel gets the lion's share of the flow and everybody else is still sort of hoping for something. It sort of puts it out there so that everything is fairly distributed. And we'll get into that. So just without further ado, thank you, Paul and Elizabeth.
Yeah, so the first slide here is really just a recall. You'll remember, I think we were back here in April. We have some prettier pictures for you this time.
You can pull it towards you.
Sorry, fighting a cold too here. So we are back with some pretty pictures, as Janice said. We've been studying all of the previous work that has been done in the Hamlet of Riverside, looking at the wrap, the rod, you know, really looking at the sort of development that the residents said they wanted, and thinking about how can we apply good town planning principles to encourage that walkable, vibrant, mixed-use, diverse community? And then working alongside Janice and the engineers who are designing the wastewater treatment facility. And as Janice mentioned, looking at alongside those good town planning principles and trying to encourage a built environment that the residents said they wanted, how to equitably distribute the sewage flow that we expect from Phase One. And so that has really been the two-fold task that we've tackled in the study area here. And so we have some diagrams, some, you know, plans, site plans, and then some renderings hopefully to show you how we can distribute the flow across the neighborhood in an equitable way. And it can result in a built environment that we think is consistent with what the residents defined, you know, in that wrap of what they wanted to see.
And the rod already exists. So there's already a zoning in place. And they took a real close look at that zoning and made sure that this is still fairly consistent with that, albeit maybe the design is a little more advanced than that document or that zoning. You know, it's sort of, but it does take into consideration very closely what the zoning says.
Yes, so this is an example of how one might apply, you know, the principles from the rod, from the wrap, along with the layer of the sewage capacity and how that might shape density and where development happens. Paul, take the.
So just to review some of what we showed you when we were here, I think, in April. So this map is showing parcels that are publicly owned and parcels that are, like some property owners have come to the town and said, like, what can we do with our, you know, what can we do with this? Like, they're interested in redeveloping. And so this is kind of like the Phase One area that we focused on for our detailed study. And then when we first looked at the overall block structure and street network of Riverside, you know, coming at this as town planners, looking at this, we're like, eh, not very conducive to a walkable, vibrant mix of uses. The blocks are very large, street network is very disconnected. And so just working within the parcels that we identified, we were able to create this basic foundation of small blocks and interconnected streets that you really want to see or that you really need to have in order to get this vibrancy and walkability and mix of uses.
And a nice community feel, like downtown. But Janice, how do we accomplish this with the separation of the blocks?
You recently, on your last meeting, voted on an official map to have Squires and Holden, not Squires and Holden, Rainer Group, work out surveying of these streets and roads. So this becomes paper streets on a map, on an official map. And so this preserves the ability to create these streets when developers come in. And we'll talk more about how that will work practically. But when you map out paper roads, that ensures that no one's going to put a building in the middle of where you think a road should go. So that's the point of, and that's a planning tool and New York State law that we have and all towns have, to preserve the infrastructure in order to have orderly growth and development.
So once the town creates the map with the paper roads, that's official? And people have to, the developers, anybody else would have to abide by that?
Right, so someone comes in and shows a building in the middle of the street, we would not be able to approve that. We would have to say, no, you have to build the street. And then there's ways that we kind of offset that. And Paul will get into that.
And they're building the streets. We're not actually building the road.
They would build the streets and dedicate them, just like any other developer.
Thank you.
And the next slide shows those streets highlighted. So we're really not talking about much to make this, I mean, truly like great foundation for a town. So that's a review of what, of the work we've done previously. Since then, we've gotten a lot of updated information from the engineers. And we've put a lot of more detailed, focused work on doing our objectives. And we had two primary objectives. This first one is how do you allocate this new wastewater treatment capacity in a fair and equitable manner across Riverside? So with a lot of back and forth and a lot of work that is not shown here, there's actually a very large Excel file that includes a ton of math and calculations and really figuring this, all this out. We developed a framework with these five different layers to help us decide how should we allocate this new flow. So the first one here is some percentage of the new flow should be distributed just based on land area or block size. So if you have a large block, then you get more capacity. If you have a small block, you get less capacity. So that's just kind of just based on how big are the parcels that we're talking about. The second one works with the existing zoning that's already in place. And so notice on the map, we've got RO1 is kind of huddled around the center of town. And then it goes all the way through RO6. That kind of already promotes this idea of distributing density in a way that matches good town planning principles. Kind of having more dense at the heart of town in RO1, less dense in RO6. So then RO1 would get more capacity, RO6 would get less. And then for the parcels where we're showing new streets, the third bullet point, new street bonus, would be put in place to help offset the cost of that new street. So you would get, you know, a bump in capacity to help pay for that street. And then number four, a reserve. We would just kind of pull out off the top and hold off to the side for future potential or for these RO5 residential districts. Like, there's limited what you can actually add to those residential lots. Like, you could do an accessory dwelling unit. So this reserve would kind of go toward that.
Yeah, if you want to put like apartment in.
Yeah.
If they qualify for it.
And then the last thing is performance metrics. So some percentage would be held back and applied only once the town has been able to review kind of the exact development project being proposed and if that meets certain performance metrics, which we don't have detailed here. But the idea would be specific design of the project, building placement, use, that sort of thing.
It appears that some of the ownership overlaps in the blocks. Does that create any issues?
So in our fancy Excel document, we have it all kind of laid out to where, like, all of these different layers kind of overlap. And they're all taken into account.
Okay, but the ultimate goal of that wrap and rod was to encourage aggregation, encourage people to work together to, so it's not just like little disparate tiny parcel by parcel, although we can get drilled down to that level and how they would interact. But the goal would be for people to get together and.
So Janice, you're taking into consideration people losing lot area for the new streets?
Yes.
That's what we said by the bump. You get a bonus. So it's like an offset. It's that you get a little bit of extra flow to offset the street.
Do you have an idea of what the range is for what they're losing?
Oh, we're giving fifteen percent.
Well, what would they be losing?
Not losing anything because you're actually getting more frontage. So you're getting better development. So the street actually becomes an asset to them, so.
I know, that's, I appreciate that that's what it means. But factually, do you have a measurement or anything?
Yeah, well, that's what we're working with when you do the official map. So we'll get to that part when the board is viewing this official map, but.
And that would be on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
So, and then the street would obviously have to connect across.
This question's probably way for down the road. So when this is developed and places the tax bracket on these people, probably the property will be worth more proper, more money because it's developed. Will that offset the taxes and lower the taxes on, you know, across the board in that neighborhood?
I didn't, this is not a tax analysis thing. That was done in the early part of the wrap. So I couldn't answer that. But if you have one level and now you have, you're at another level, you would have equity. And so that's a good thing.
So that should be pointed out to the people that, actually, this might lower their taxes.
I don't know that for certain, but I know that when you get hooked up to infrastructure, you have more equity, you get more value, you have more value. So it's keeping that value. And then you can borrow against that value.
Yeah.
You know, you can make improvements because you have new value now. And so those things are the benefits. But the tax implications.
That's down the road.
Are down the road, yeah.
That's what I figured. But it should be a point to look at to tell the people, like, if you have a, the school tax is going to be so much. But if you, if the property values up, so the school tax goes a little bit up higher, it's, they have to get the same amount of money, so it actually would lower it.
Well, look at it this way, there's a lot of vacant, underutilized, low-tax parcels that would now be on the tax rolls.
Yeah.
And then not necessarily causing school district impacts every, across the, yes.
Yeah.
You know, but it's a balance. You're collecting more tax to offset that.
In reality, I think it might even go down better.
Yeah, but I, you know, it would be pure speculation at the moment for me to say.
Did I just ask a question? So based on what was just said about the, hi, Jan. Based on what was stated about the vacant properties, would that reserve category, I know that you just mentioned that that would be sort of an opportunity for, you know, ADUs, apartments, et cetera. But would that also potentially engender vacant properties because you're keeping it on a reserve?
No, we're not keeping anything on a reserve. We're just saying there's flow for Phase One. And then you hold back some amount of that flow, see how things are looking, how it's going, and then say, hey, you know, we think this would be, you know, worth, you know, adding to over here. And we've got this flow in our bank that we can put toward it. So it's, you know, it's a little bit of an iterative where, but we're not saying no one, and that's the whole point here, every single block has flow to start out with. But then there's a reserve amount of flow that you can use as you see how this is going.
Yeah.
Kind of a contingency.
It's a contingency to make sure you're not overburdening anything at first. You know, and you have a mechanism to, you know, transfer more over here where you need it and move it around.
That's the eight percent reserve.
The eight percent reserve was just for an area that's RO5, which is not really redevelopment potential, but just so that people go, well, what about us? And you say, well, you could put an accessory apartment because you're just a single-family home. And so it would just, but we want development rate, right? So it's like the development rate equivalent is the reserve. That's what we're saying about that.
So then the next slide.
It counts toward the whole number.
We'll dive into some of the specific numbers we're talking about. So the engineers have told us that we have, or we should reasonably expect about three hundred and forty thousand gallons per day of net new flow across all of Riverside. So that's just the new flow. Add that on to the existing flow, you'll have a total of about five hundred thousand.
That's both phases.
Both phases. But then for our exercise here, you know, we're looking at that three hundred and forty thousand of new capacity and distributing that. And so that roughly translates into about a thousand new housing units and about four hundred thousand square feet of commercial.
All sold, all in.
All, yeah, Phase One, Phase Two, all three hundred and forty thousand gallons. And this map, we're highlighting some of the flows allocated to the blocks.
When you say units, how big are the units?
They vary. So on the, average.
Well, it varies because some of them are single-family. Well, we're going to get into that in the next week.
I'm jumping the gun here.
Yeah, so that is our first objective, just distributing these flows. The second objective is to illustrate how the new capacity can result in a walkable and balanced mix of uses. So what do these flows actually mean in terms of, you know, what does the development look like? What kind of development can or should we expect? So we used a framework of these three filters here. So the first one, it's, a lot of this is just an engineering problem. You know, we just need to make sure that whatever we study can actually fit within the flow capacity that we have. And so that's number one, just to make sure we hit those flow requirements. Number two, then, is any residential or commercial use that we propose or include in our study here, we just want to make sure that it's reasonable for a town the size of Riverside. Hamlet, the size of Riverside. You know, given its population and given some of the existing uses. And then third point is to make sure that what we're showing meets all those good town planning principles that we've referenced before. So then for our detailed study, we are only looking at the parcels highlighted here. So just the publicly owned lots and the larger developer kind of aggregated lots. And again, this is just to give an illustrative idea of what these flows could result in. It's not necess, it's not saying like, this is exactly what shall be built. It's more of, let's just make sure that the flow distribution we're talking about actually yields a great result. So for the residential units, we are looking at unit sizes between four hundred and fifty square feet and twelve hundred square feet plus. So a range of unit sizes and also a range of unit types. Single-family detached homes, townhouses, apartments above commercial. And the number of units that I'm showing here per type, again, we're not saying there shall be fifty-five housing units built. It's more of a reasonable kind of mix of housing types that you could expect to see in a town, a hamlet like Riverside.
It's representative of what might reasonably be built. It is not a mandate that this needs to be built.
Yes, but also.
Down to you, but we, but they're saying this is what the market supports. This is what the land supports. This is the flow supports. This is a nice design. This is achievable in terms of finance. You know, like, these are things that can actually happen. So it's not pie in the sky. You know, we're not talking about big podium buildings like in Riverhead. We're talking about a smaller Hamlet Riverside gateway into our, into the town of Southampton. So it's a different sort of look and feel. So, sorry, Paul.
And same thing with commercial uses. We're not proposing anything crazy here. Office, retail, restaurants. But all of these housing units and commercial uses have different flow rates. And so it's been a big balancing act of what can a market, the size of Riverside, kind of support? How does that balance with the flows? And then how does that distribute based on our flow allocations? So that's all the work we've been doing. So then on the next slide is.
Grocery store, though, this, with twenty thousand square feet. What do you think is the size, any idea of a supermarket?
Like a Trader Joe's is like a fourteen or fifteen thousand square feet.
So it's within that realm of the twenty area?
So the next slide here is a diagram taking all that information and distributing it across our study area. And this is primarily just to make sure that this all works. And this diagram tells us that it does. And we, all of our new streets are lined very well by these new buildings. There's a great mix of uses that promotes this walkability across all of Riverside. The next slide, we actually highlight some of the commercial uses. And we just wanted to show that we're.
Question, what are stacked flats?
Stacked flats are basically a townhouse, but with two units in the townhouse.
Okay, so instead of being side by side, they're one above the other, okay.
So then we were highlighting the commercial uses just to show you how, you know, we're thinking about keeping those aggregated along the existing corridors of commercial so that the interior streets can maintain their more residential character. So then the next slide, we dive more into a detail, just looking at four of the blocks, just to study in more detail how this exactly shakes out in terms of architecture and setbacks and building types. And so this allocation of flow can result in a great mix of residential units and home types and a commercial mix, small building footprints, buildings, you know, addressing the street, parking in the rear. I mean, really, like, this is kind of your ideal town planning setup here. Buildings facing the street, parking in the back, mix of uses. And the next slide highlights.
In order to do this, this corner right here.
Which corner?
This one right here. Where the old gas station is. The town should try to buy that. Because that's a proposed 7-Eleven there.
We've been trying to buy that. We don't have a willing seller. So that would be, in our plan, it would be much better served as a gateway treatment than gas pumps.
I agree with you.
That's a.
I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and the next slide just breaks that down, shows the different parcels and ownership across that.
Paul, could you go back to this one? Are the single-family homes also along the street frontage? I mean, you know, if it's one thing to have apartments over a retail shop and you want to be right on the main road, but for homes, wouldn't it be better if they're, you know, not necessarily right on the main street?
A lot of these would be setback. This drawing isn't to scale, but, I mean, a lot of these that I'm showing are like twenty feet back. So it is a substantial setback. But also, you know, I drew house footprints there, but that might not be what actually develops there.
But it could look like a house, but be multi. Look like a single-family, like I've been telling you in other realms here, like you can design it to look and feel like a single-family home, but it has four units in it and you don't realize it when you drive by. Which we know we have density planned here, so that wouldn't be scary.
See in the graphic, there's kind of a variety of different setbacks. You can see, you know, the units that are attached, that are more probably townhouse-esque, are a little bit closer to the street. And then you can see, you know, the units that are more freestanding are set back a little bit more. So they do have small front yards there, you can see. But that's very much a traditional village orientation where you have that small front yard. You can kind of see the street from your front door. That's part of what makes the streets walkable and feel safe.
What if nobody wants to build single-family homes? I mean, can we require that it get built? Or is this what we're recommending, but it's really up to the owner of the properties?
Most people are going to go, what can I do here? And they're going to want to do the maximum thing they can do. So there's, we have to now look at it and say, what, where is it, you know, more conducive? Where is it more conducive to do the single-family? And this isn't about single-family. This whole area is more a mix, right? So you have single, townhouse, right. So some people have expressed they, you know, they would do some, whatever the town wants, basically. It's better than just one unit that they would get right now. Like, anything they're getting is better than what they get right now, which is what they have, which is not much. So the idea is to give, confer some more density and in the style and preferred manner. And then we can work with people. What do you want to do? And see how that goes.
And then, so now what does all this actually, you know, what could this look like? So here's a view of, an existing view looking over Flanders Road, looking to the south. And then if you flip to the next page, this is kind of the scale of development that was being represented on the diagram, oop, the diagram that I was showing. So buildings that are one to four stories, mix of building height types, mix of building heights, mix of uses. Like, this is, I mean, just a great town plan, you know, that promotes this vibrancy.
Since we're on this page, you want to talk about, this is one, these parcels, if you go back to the other, these, some of these parcels are what you've been discussing buying, if you want to.
Yeah, the parcels to the right.
And doing some affordable there. And there was a question at the last meeting about, well, wait a minute, they're getting forty units an acre and that's, you know, it's not going to be forty units an acre all around. And I just want to address that now.
Do it now?
Yeah, if you don't mind, just to talk about it, because we did look at, wait a minute, is that true? And looking at the blocks and looking at the acreage and looking at everything. And you really have to look at it as a whole program and look at the whole area of Riverside and the phasing. And when you do the math over that area, you can't be like, oh, this is forty units per acre, because it's not. It's, it's actually seven units per acre when you count the whole program, the whole area. The whole plan works out mathematically to be about seven units an acre across all told. So there may be forty in one building, but there may be only ten in another because of the amount of block size and streets, et cetera. So it all works out and the flow you allocate. So, so this is very different than anything we normally look at and do. So I just want to like address that and say, that's, the program here is about seven units an acre all told across the whole thing.
A lot of people don't understand that.
Yeah. But we, we had to think about that for a minute too, because-
That's phase one, right?
Phase everything.
Phase one and phase two.
Well, I think you said it was a hundred and fifty acres total and it's a thousand, uh-
About a thousand units.
All, all told, if you do it half-
Yeah, thousand eighty-five units.
It's the same proportion.
Yeah.
Like so many in phase one over seventy-five acres is the same thing as the whole in a hundred and fifty acres. We did the math on both and they both worked out to be around seven point something.
Yeah, seven point one and seven point two.
Yeah, acres per, I mean, units per acre in the whole program. So we have to look at this like a whole program and not like a parcel by parcel way, because this is different than any other thing we normally do. So we just have to, like, I just want to make sure we remember that and think of it that way, because it's very important in order to make this all work. And I did the math on all the flows in each block and they, they are around that, you know. It's really units per block. So if you do forty units per this block, you may get, you know, less or more or around the same, but the whole thing is going to work out to be that number, seven per acre.
Yeah.
Overall. So I think that's just an important point we have to remember. Phil, thank you.
Yeah.
Let me digress into that.
So overall, it's seven per acre, but the ask for that one acre was forty.
But that block and that block has not much more potential to put anything else. So it really works out to be forty. Like there's not much more you can do there. There's a seven eleven potential there next to, you know, down the lane. And the rest is that. And was there any others?
At the bottom of the block.
The bottom of the block may have a little bit of potential there. Can you just point out like where we're talking about?
Yeah, so that top left block there.
There's where it says apartments over retail. That's this one that you're looking at, that, on the right side of that graphic. Yes. So there's not much more for that whole block to be there. So in other words, if you do forty units and that's the one you buy and do, there's not much more potential. And no one's asking for anything else. There's a seven eleven potent and that's really it. There's no other real parcels in, happening in that block.
And, I mean, that's, you know, really where you'd want to see those forty units is you're closer to town. I mean, it still works within all the flows that we've highlighted and so it's, it's a good spot.
You could reduce it. If you felt more comfortable with thirty-five or something, I know that, that, we've talked to Dave about this and he's willing to make those concessions if that, if you feel better about it, but truly like-
I don't think the maintenance numbers work for much on-
It seems random though, just to try to reduce it. I mean, maybe there's another way to look at it. How many gallons per day per block have you assigned?
That's in that- On the area.
Does it?
Further you move away from Flanders Road, the less you get.
On the graphic, if you can go on the-
I thought you had said twenty thousand gallons per day per block.
No. Look at, each one has a different flow allocation. It's on this page.
Flow rates are higher. The flow is higher towards Flanders Road, because that's where you want to-
This is the page you want to look at.
Put the density closer to the center.
See where it says like A has nine thousand, B has ten thousand, C has seventy-five hundred, D, you know, it goes on from there.
And that's based-
Blocks have little numbers written on top of them.
Yeah. So like block D, there are two numbers corresponding to the different zones that are within that same block. So it's, it's showing the numbers based on all the, those filters that we went through.
Right. And we held back, so you will have reserve flow. So if you're like, okay, when it's all said and done, we have more flow to work with. You can allocate more if you wanted to. So we're holding back flow to phase two later to make sure this is happening in a way that you're happy with. So we don't want to like overdevelop anything. It's a, it's a way of incremental planning and incremental phasing of development so that everything is sort of operational and functional and then you can see what else you want to do. Or, you know, and have a reserve for the future.
Wait, so is this area, block B? So there are other things on here besides just this. What's all this down here?
Uh, that's just from-
We own that on the bottom, the T-shirt. We call that the T-shirt parcel. The town owns.
I mean, you're reflecting one, two, three, four, five, six buildings down on this lower part. So-
It's just a mix of commercial and some additional residential units.
Yeah, but to say that the, the one building that the applicant is coming in is the only thing that's going to go on that block isn't accurate.
I'm not trying to say that's the only thing. I'm saying it's not much more flow outside of that. That's the lion's share. Everything else would be smaller.
Yeah, there's other development shown, but you can see about, you know, just visually, half the block area, you know, is not developed because of the police barracks, because of the seven eleven at the corner. And just from a use standpoint, as Paul highlighted, different uses, residential, commercial, office, have different flow capacities, flow rates. And so the, you know, the other uses, if they're retail, has a very low flow rate associated with it. You know, those smaller units will have less flow rate associated with them. And as we were talking about, this is one of those blocks that's kind of in the area where we want to encourage, you know, more of the development because it's, it's up near the traffic circle, it's along the existing corridor, it's in that R, you know, the R O one zoning as well. So if we're talking about an average of seven units per acre across the whole study area, if that were to break down, you know, just looking at the number of blocks, that brings down to kind of forty to fifty units per block. But you want to load a little bit more of that up here in this area, you know, so it makes sense that you'd want, say, fifty or sixty units on this block. Since this is in the denser area of town.
I have something in my notes. I don't know where it came from, but it's, so you're saying the block B is about ten thousand gallons per day, right? That's what that number means? And that the applicant is thirty percent of that? Is that accurate? I don't know where that, where, I don't know. My notes say that that is thirty percent of twenty thousand gallons per day for the block, but I don't know why it says twenty when it's only ten.
When we reviewed this previously, we, I know we, we did a preview last week with you and so we're looking at some of these numbers. I think we had different flow numbers per block. And part of that was if you actually go to the previous page in your package, you know, the criteria we're looking at and how we're allocating the flow. You can see that number five, performance metrics. So what we did, we previously had twenty thousand gallons per day allocated for that block. We held back fifty percent of that for that performance metrics category so that the town could incentivize the sort of development they want to see there. And so the applicant could get that bonus if they meet the design criteria.
Yeah, it's not just like a given. And so everybody goes, well, this is, I get twenty thousand, so how long they do this thing that you don't want? It's sort of like, here's what you start with and then as you-
As you meet our criteria, we give more.
Then allocate. So it's a, it's a control. It is. And that's how we need to do it, unfortunately, but that's how you're going to get what you want.
But even if you said it's twenty thousand, thirty percent of that, it's six thousand gallons per day would be his share. And then you said divided by a hundred and fifty gallons per day per each apartment average. So that does come out to forty units, but that doesn't take into consideration any of the first floor retail and-
So performance metrics.
Restaurant.
So you get your ten thousand and then you say, oh, you're creating ground floor retail, we'll transfer. We have this fifty percent bucket here of the rest of the flow, up to twenty in that block. And you say, oh, you're creating retail that, we'll give you the flow for that. Oh, you're creating, we'll put the flow in. It's how you want it to go. So there's a baseline and then there's moving flow over, because the performance standards are such that you're getting the, you know, how you get, you know, people are able to say, okay, I'm going to commit to doing, you know, ground floor retail or I'm going to do this use that you really, that the community wants.
So if you have to, to say like, you have ground retail for ten years, also since someone wants to put a restaurant in there, if there's extra flow, can you move that over?
Absolutely. That's the point. But you get to decide. It's flexible.
But not if he's used all the flow for the apartments.
He's not using all the flow. There's twenty thousand, but we're saying ten is the base.
Twenty thousand equals forty units, forty residential units. Didn't you say it's about a hundred and fifty gallons per day per unit?
I think when we did-
Yeah, I think, uh-
When we did the math the other day, forty units, I thought it was somewhere more like-
This is, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be aggressive. This is just a sticking point for me, so I just want to make sure I understand it.
Twenty thousand gallons would give you a hundred and thirty-three units.
No, but he's only got thirty percent of the block. So it's thirty percent of the twenty thousand. So that's six thousand divided by the one fifty is forty.
We're actually applying that math like that. I don't know that that works. Like just being like, does that, is that how we're doing it? I don't know that that ma- that makes sense.
Yeah, you would have to do a different study where, I mean, that parcel is only, is one acre. But we would have to take out all the acreage from the, the police barracks and apply, spread that to the remaining acreage. So our study, we were just looking at the block as a whole. And so, yeah, you can, you can really distribute the, the uses any way you want. You could either do a hundred and thirty housing units on that block or you could do a-
You're still trying to get down to a parcel level here.
Yeah.
And that's where it's not entirely working. Because we're trying to say, look at it as a full block.
But my, my hangup is that there's five hundred and thirty-two units available in phase one. And if we allocate forty here, is that being fair and even handed and balanced?
Based on this framework, yes.
More units on this corner in this zoning category. That's where you want more units. And I think there's also something to be said that, that the early adopters, if you will, the people who are willing to come in and invest early and kind of set the tone for development and show somebody that there's critical mass and there's demand in the neighborhood, you might want to incentivize that a little bit more. So, you know, there makes, there's a lot of sense why you would give a little bit more flow capacity, a little bit more density on this block here, since it's the key block right at the corner.
Because you're going to have traffic, buses.
We want to make it walkable and in, you know, it's not just about, there is traffic already driving by, so there's, it's that you're looking for someone to live there and walk over and work at the school. That's one more car off the road. You know what I mean? Or they live there and they work in the retail downstairs.
It's basically what-
Idea here.
What you were saying where, what they did in the choir with the seventy-nine units, that, that's, you know, that place is not walkable. They had to make it, probably administrate, stretch it to a mile.
Right, but that's like not anything to do with this. So we have-
I'm just saying, using it as an example, why.
Right, but again, that's looking at unit per acre. And here, we're not talking about unit per acre unless you're talking about the whole thing. Right now, we're talking about units per block. So if he has forty units per block, I think your point is how many are left over for anyone else? And we could do that math. We just haven't done that right this minute. But I don't think, you know, we can say, well, you only have thirty percent or this or that, but, but then you're putting in a road, so you get a bonus. So that, and that's all-
Depends on what you want, right?
Yeah.
Exactly. And also retail, office uses, they take substantially less flow. So-
Unless it's a little restaurant.
Yeah, restaurants take a lot of flow.
Little luncheonette that would take-
Yeah. So-
So we can sit here and figure that out, but the bigger point of coming here was just that you wanted to see, where are we at? How are you doing this? How is this going to work? So this is like the mechanics of it all. And we're happy to go back and be like, well, you know, you want to really get granular, but, you know, the more granular you get, the more spending time on it we have to do. And we want to get to a real world person who's putting money on the table to do it. And they're the ones that are going to tell us, this doesn't work for us, or it does.
This is helpful for the community to see, because I think the community, because the first one that we're starting with is, happens to be affordable housing and it happens to be forty units an acre. And I think it's important for them to see that this whole area is not forty units per acre, like, you know, we're not, and we're not putting up, you know, five and six story apartment buildings and it's, it's planned out, it's thought out.
So this is, yeah, I don't want to like take away from the grand finale part, which is Paul spent a lot of time like kind of visualizing the street network and looking at how that would look and feel.
Paul, before your grand finale, because I don't want to take away from that, but I do have another question about the affordability and, you know. For whatever reason, it was set at fifty percent of the units have to be affordable, even though the rest of the town is twenty percent, right? So whether the board decides to change it to twenty or not, how are we dividing up the affordable units? Because if we let this first applicant in the door have all forty be affordable, then, you know, if, are we saying you have to have fifty percent, but you could have a hundred percent affordable units, they could all be affordable? Or are we saying no more than fifty percent and, and should he be able to have, you know, a hundred percent affordable?
So if you had in your pro, we have in the program five hundred and thirty-two units in phase one. And half of that would be fifty percent affordable, right? So that would be two hundred and sixty-six total units would have to be affordable, of which forty, you're just doing like a, okay, we have forty. We have to have two hundred and sixty-six out of the five thirty-two. If that is your will, that is what the code says now.
You're saying it's like going to be on a first come, first served, whoever fills out that first fifty percent, unless you want to change it.
Unless you want to change it, but right now, we're, we're doing it-
You're going to have people that want to do all market rate.
So, so then the town giving out money for the community housing fund, I think people, everybody, it's likely that some, a lot of the developers will want to avail themselves of the community housing fund money and put in some affordable units also.
A D U plus ones count as affordable too. So of those two sixty-six, you're ticking down, okay, forty here, these guys are doing E D U plus ones, right? Those are affordable. They have to be.
Well, and then too, if you have a block, right, and you want to do eight townhomes. You still have to-
Affordable housing.
But hold on.
But there aren't that many single family homes here.
My question is, if you have a block, right, and you want to do a block of townhomes, say. They're still like in water mill, you have to meet that criteria of so much percentage of that has to be, because of the law, has to be affordable, correct? So those units would count towards it.
Everything just keeps going down until you end. And at two sixty-six, it's over. So it's at fifty percent is market rate, fifty percent is affordable. And don't forget, the affordable goes up to a hundred and twenty percent A M I. So it's still the same.
It's, it's more market rate than, I mean, to me, I mean, it's, to me, the affordable units are what market rate should be.
Yes. I think we should require twenty percent like the rest of the town and cap it at fifty percent. That's my opinion.
You can do that.
Well, if the board wants to.
It's a policy decision of the board.
Then everybody can, then the affordable units can be spread throughout the whole hamlet instead of concentrated in one area or certain areas. I thought that was the point of just having it balanced and, you know, I mean, there are developments that have been going up that have, you know, seven, ten units of which are affordable and the rest are market and it seems to be working. People are grabbing them up, you know?
I mean, you could do, the block has additional market rate units. So you saw that picture and you said, wait, he's getting forty, but what about the other ones? Do the other ones as market rate and do those as affordable and that's-
So if you're doing, if you're doing, say, uh, just to, just to keep it easy, you're doing a hundred apartments and you want to do seventy of them are market rate, twenty of them are affordable, because that's what we've told you you can do. Each, are you saying the entire area can, up to fifty percent affordable?
The whole area, the whole program said, this is from the past.
But so my question is though, like for somebody like Dave, I'm just going to use it because it's, it's before us. So for somebody like Dave Gallow to come in and do forty units, if he wanted to make fifty percent of those market rate and fifty percent of those affordable, he's not going to get tax credits for those twenty units.
That's what I'm saying though, these other developers that are going to want tax credits and community housing fund money. Why are we concentrating all the affordable units in one location when it should be evenly distributed throughout the hamlet?
I think they will be when you start putting in the requirements that, when you're doing townhomes and stuff like that, a percentage of them have to be affordable anyway.
The, the concentration thing, when you look at the building, you don't know anything about what someone pays for it. The, the concentration thing, when you look at the building, you don't know anything about what someone pays for rent.
From a design perspective.
Idea of concentrating anything is, you're not concentrating it, you're, you're offering the unit in a building to someone who can afford it versus someone who can't, but the building is still the building either way. It's still a beautiful building. And no one knows apartment A is affordable and apartment B is a little bit less affordable. Like it's on the AMI scale. You know, but what do you mean by concentrating? Like, you're just at, you're just allowing its availability to go to people in a lottery. But they're, they're all, there's.
About the concentration of placement.
Sure, but you're just talking about forty units out of two sixty-six. So if you say only twenty percent of those units, so you have five thirty-two.
But those, well, just also clarify that those units are all affordable, but they're affordable on a sliding scale. They're not all one income bracket, they're, they're a mix.
Saying, you don't know how much someone pays for rent. They, depends on their income, so if, somebody could get i- i- within those forty units, you, let's just make it easy, ten are one AMI, ten are another, you know what I mean, like that? And you're saying on the overall plan.
I think Michael's trying to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm just, let me just make this last point, is that if you say on the overall plan, if you put forty here, that's forty less that could be distributed elsewhere. But every single development, half of what they put in has to be fitting these guidelines, so it's always gonna be half the total.
I think, tell me if I'm, you're trying to say that you're giving it all to one developer that's coming in cuz they're first here, first serve, and they've asked for forty, so they're getting the forty off the bat. Which takes it all down to two twenty.
Sure.
That, that's what, that's what.
But as Elizabeth said, an early adopter, someone who's actually versed in building something, who's gonna build something.
Yeah, we want them in the door.
They're the, they're gonna set the tone, and that might be worth it to you.
Exactly.
You know?
Michael?
No, I just, I, that's sort of answered my question, I just, I, I, is it, is it fair to say, correct me if I'm wrong, that if we were to move ahead with Gallo's project, that still does not preclude other developers from coming in and applying for a project where there is mixed use, where you have some affordable, some non-affordable. Let's say another forty-unit workforce housing at some other location. That, that, this, this approval of, of, if we were to approve Gallo's project, that doesn't preclude other projects appearing in another location in this, the project scope area, correct?
The, no, it doesn't. The only thing that would preclude it is if you went down to twenty percent, then you'd only have a hundred and six affordables, of which he's doing forty, and then you'd only have sixty-six left.
How, how does the reserve that you have set aside in flow work with the additional? Like, can you add, like, if you have, if you haven't gone into that pot of reserve flow, can you say somebody else can have more?
Yeah, if you want to. Right now, it's just set at fifty. If you wanna change that number, that's why you're at the board. If you wanna keep that number and see how it goes, you can keep it, you can change it at any.
It sounds like if we were to change the number, though, we would restrict ourselves, and then we are, what Maria would say, concentrating that affordable housing in the one location, right? So if we were to keep it wider uh, in the percentage, then we're, we're actually providing more opportunity for more dispersed, uh, growth.
That's right.
He's good. I think right now, too, the higher end of affordable in that area, is probably pretty close to what market's gonna be for that area. So even if it's not quote affordable housing, I think it would all fit within the realm of what they could afford. For now. And the more we develop and over years, it's probably gonna sustain itself pretty well.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Why don't you proceed to finish up with that?
Regardless of how the affordability shakes out, um, I mean, you, you end up with, you know, a great walkable neighborhood, um. You can have like fruity shops and center stores and mix of housing units and types, um, I mean, it's, it's everything you want to see in a great hamlet.
Yeah, it looks beautiful.
Well, I have a question on that. I mean, you always come up with the most beautiful pictures and renditions and all. So the sidewalks that you have on twenty-four, they look a lot wider than they are now. We'd have that in code, that they would have to be set back a little. And some of the buildings are set back even more, that would be in our code.
We, uh, we're not changing the code. The code is the code, so the, the RO, unless you wanna change certain things in the code, but we can take a look at that and make sure, but I'm pretty sure they had that in there, that it had to be wider sidewalks at, at twenty-four in the rap.
And the addition of two outlets onto twenty-four, you don't find is a problem, through, two new roads coming out?
No, it actually, um. It promote, like connectivity promotes route options, so, you know, it can distribute both vehicular and pedestrian traffic, uh, throughout a greater area.
Well, that's my concern, because that traffic circle is a nightmare and it backs up considerably, and it would just give the people coming down, yeah, the shortcuts through to Flanders Road that way.
Just getting on Flanders Road and sitting at the circle in a different spot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I go that way every day and you, it doesn't matter.
I mean, I laugh when all the people cut down Pine Street, cuz I'm like, you're gonna be at the same distance.
Spot, and so most people don't bother because it doesn't really.
Someone said if the light on the main street were set differently, it would allow, you know, that that's why it's backing up into the circle.
Doing for a while during rush hour, they had police officers there, and they were keeping that intersection moving. And when they keep that intersection moving, the circle doesn't back up.
Yeah, cuz when you make a right on, that's the backup, is all the people going on to Peconic Avenue, and then making a right, and then a left. And that was a solid green left arrow, but now it's much shorter.
Yeah.
And so I think that's part of the problem.
Tell the supervisor.
Sure.
I think that's all we got.
Oh, just that other, see the top and bottom on the left, I think that's worth talking about.
Yeah, so just to kind of bring it all back, oh, and this presentation doesn't have the, oh, well. Uh, just to bring it all back to the, uh, what we talked about at the beginning, um, you know, we, as architects and planners, we look at patterns, uh, across whole towns and across, uh, different architecture. And so when you look at Riverside as it exists today, on the top left, we see disconnected streets and buildings just kinda scattered about these large areas. There's real, no real concentration. Which is really what you wanna see, um, loo- looking out across these, uh, other towns. So in our proposal, if you were to, to follow that, that pattern of both development and building placement and architecture can follow these more established patterns from, uh, these other towns and hamlets elsewhere. And so you can see how they kind of more.
Smaller blocks and fill in the teeth.
Exactly, yeah.
You got it.
Well, it's very beautiful and very helpful to have us, uh, try to visualize what it could be and all the potential.
So we'll be back again, well, they won't, but I'll be back again with Arcadis on the sixteenth to talk about the sewer progress. And that, this is sort of what this is all tying together, so it's nice to have the design side, um, with it. Cuz there was a lot of fear about what this was gonna bring, and I think now, if we're on the right track and you'll give us feedback. If this is what you wanna see, then, or if you want something different, let us know. But, um, yeah, that way, you know, we are, as we get into public participation with the sewer and how you're gonna connect, and this is happening, people can feel more comfortable.
Do we wanna update the pattern book?
We don't have a pattern book, and that was one of the things, if you'd like a proposal for a pattern book, I think we need one here.
Yeah.
And then we can then have one for this, and that was kind of the next logical thing.
We could work off of our pattern book that we had for Hampton Days, I mean, we can start.
They did it.
It'd be very easy to start with that, cuz I think we're wanna look, wanna look like the same kind of.
So that's, you know, what we're thinking is, the next step, as Janice mentioned, you know, you, you guys have already started talking about, um, creating the official map. You know, that creates these new streets, the paper streets, so I think in our mind, that would be kind of the basis, the regulating plan, if you will, for a pattern book. And then the pattern book would define what those, some of those performance metrics are, you know, kind of the setback zone, how the buildings meet the street. What the architectural character is, I think we could take some of, um, you know, the similar architectural rules of thumb.
Some of the historic buildings that are, you know, and kind of work that in.
Sure we maintain them and, and build upon them.
That's important.
Okay, good, so that would be our next step.
Next steps.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming in. We love it when you're in person with us.
Could I, could I just add one more thing? Could I, can I add one more thing?
Oh, Michael.
So sorry, do you guys hear me?
Yes.
If you do. Um, so if, if possible, I would love for, first of all, I love the idea of a pattern book, I think would be a great addition. Um, I also would like to, uh, suggest some sort of traffic or engineering analysis of what the impacts of those, those additional roads would be, as Rick mentioned, you know, the potential problems that might occur, although based on what you drew out, uh, this is really the historical concepts. It looks like it would actually provide relief from some of the folks that are on Flanders Road, looking to maybe go to the circle to get on one of the adjoining uh, legs. I think that it might be a, uh, however, a benefit to demonstrate from an engineering perspective. Uh, what would the impact of those additional roads be to the, uh, overall, uh, mean traffic issues there?
That will, that's not them, that's the engineering side with the official map, so we can do some, we can.
Can update the what was in the wrapper.
I can, um, kind of give those when it's done, uh, or at least mapped, give it to a traffic engineer to have. So you have that, when we do the official map hearing, so you'll have that.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Good point, Michael.
Okay, great, well, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to the next presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next topic is a proposed grant application to establish a Bridgehampton Residential Historic District. We have our Assistant Town Attorney Kelly Doyle, Julie Green, our town historian, and Ed Wisnovsky, Chair of our Landmarks and Historic Districts Board. And thank you for your patience, our apologies for running behind this morning. There was a traffic accident and we started late.
Have you?
Hmm, I know about this thing.
Have this on in the wall? They, if they have this in Wi-Fi, they have the scan, they can scan my card. Do you have this, where you could send it to Michael?
Um, oh, yeah.
I have, I have it.
Oh, good.
Thank you for doing that so quick.
Just say it and it happens, you know?
Snap your fingers.
Good morning, Ed.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right, thank you, welcome. So tell us what you're, um, what you're thinking about here, give us the background.
Well, Town of Southampton, uh, in January two, two thousand twenty-three, uh, was became part of the state and federal government program for historic preservation, it's called Certified Local Government. Uh, and, uh, as such, it requires certain standards for, uh, local governments to uh, apply for historic preservation purposes. But it also comes with, uh, the opportunity for certain types of grant, uh, options. And, um, uh, that's what the, uh, program is that we're talking about today. Um, federal government provides funds to each state, and each state then has the ability to offer grants for, uh, different types of programs related to, uh, local historic preservation activities. And, uh, uh, we had already started back in March, I think. Uh, in conversations with the Bridgehampton Civic Association, which was interested in uh, moving forward with a Bridgehampton Residential Historic District.
Because right now, there's a downtown historic district.
Basically Main Street and a few s- side buildings off of Main Street. Uh, and, uh, uh, the outlines of that district were, was originally set out in a survey, a reconnaissance survey, done in two thousand fourteen for the town by AKRF Associates, uh, and is on the town, uh, website as part of the survey of the Town of Southampton Historic Resources. Uh, and, uh, in talking to the Bridgehampton Civic Association, uh, they solicited some volunteer, uh, activity, I, I asked them to begin to list the property types that might be involved, uh, and, uh, the locations of them in the residential, uh, area, and this recently, we got this wonderful gift from GIS, uh, here, uh, Ross Baldwin in Skylah, Virginia, who provided us yesterday afternoon with this map.
That was fast.
Yeah.
Uh, which, um, was a product of some work of, uh, both Tom Watson of the Bridgehampton Civic Association and Julie Green, uh, here, who is, uh, also been, uh, involved and uh, working on this. But as we move forward, uh, there are certain needs that really should be, uh, addressed. Some of them can probably be addressed with existing town resources. Um, and some of them, uh, need to be addressed for, with, uh, outside consultants. Um, the, uh, question is, uh, the grant program provides for uh, support for various types of activity, including local designation, ac- activity for, uh, historic districts. Uh, but it's a reimbursement program, it, uh, basically, you have to spend the funds and ask for the payment later on. So, um, what we're, uh, and it also requires the town supervisor to sign off on the application as well. So, uh, uh, as part of our effort here to, uh, work to bring about uh, a projected historic district for the residential areas of Bridgehampton. Uh, we'd like to, uh, try to utilize that source of funding. Which requires us to make an application by October thirty-first. And that application process involves a lot of discussion and reviewing, uh, of activity of, of various parties, including with SHPO of the state of New York. So, uh, before we go forward with a lot of effort to put forward the paperwork, um, you know, we're interested in having the town, uh, give approval if it meets their, meets their needs.
There's a matching chair?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask, the, um, the Residential Historic District, would this be like we did with Downtown, it would not be voluntary, it would be, we would be designating?
You would be designating a hi- historic district, uh, in which the architectural and uh, uh, building activity would be regulated.
Because when we did with the, when we did the Downtown, we put them all out, right? And we had some people that came in that didn't wanna be, and we excluded them. Would this work the same way?
Uh, that would, that would be open for discussion in terms of, uh, the public interest of the town.
What kind of, uh, public outreach has been done to the, to the parcel owners? None?
So far, none, and that would be part of possible expenses involved here as well.
Mailings and, and getting people on board.
Okay.
Right, there, there's a number of things that can be involved here, including, you know, pr- uh, providing outreach through the website, through newspaper, uh, notices, and through mailings. Uh, we did that the last time for the Downtown District. Uh, but this has just been a process that's been slowly dribbling forward, and the grant opportunity was only uh, presented to us September twelfth, so we basically are trying to incorporate. So we basically are trying to incorporate that with what we've been doing.
So what exactly would you be using the grant money for?
Well, the grant money for any consultants that would be necessary. Consultants possibly would be involved, one, in architectural description of the, what would be considered the contributing properties. Consultants for, you have to have some imaging of the properties to document them and their condition at the time the historic district is being formed. There may be other consultants for some historic purposes, like deed research associated with property history, to give historical context to the property. There would also possibly be consultant for the creation of the documentation and the publication of it in its final form for, for a district.
When, when we had done the Main Street, we weren't a CLG at that moment, right? So there's, now that we're certified by local government, it's a little different. I, you know, and I went and took all the photographs, but this is a much larger.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I just, I think it's a great endeavor. I just would like to get like a, like feedback from the actual property owners just offhand if they would be interested in doing this, just because of the fact that, you know, I'd hate for us to invest a great deal of money in this if you're going to say over 50% of the residents don't, aren't interested. You know, the people, I mean, I understand the greater community would like to see this happen, but the actual property owners, if we don't have over 50% buy-in from the property owners and they're not interested in exploring this, to go down this road and to invest your time and resources and, and just, you know, I just don't know how we get that initial feedback the best way.
Well, we haven't even gotten to the point of identifying all the properties correctly in what we are projecting. So that process, as I say, has been kind of dribbling along to perfect the application for a historic district. The grant opportunity for repayment of some funding or expenses associated with it is just something that arrived at our back door at this point in time.
Something we need to apply for and then kind of put the cart before the horse a little.
But even, so when we apply for that, because it's a payback program, we are not obligated to spend anything. It just allows us to recoup some of that money if we are to get the grant.
Well, yeah, otherwise, in the process, a lot of this stuff would proceed as it did before, in-house efforts to articulate.
Just too much. You guys don't have the time for this.
I mean, that one was right at COVID.
Yeah.
So I could, there was no cars on Main Street in Bridgehampton, so I just, you know, it was a very, you know, a much easier, and there weren't as many properties.
Sometimes the grants don't pay for feasibility studies. You know, I haven't looked at this, but is this some, what you're proposing, is that definitely covered by the grant?
Yes. If you look on page two, under the projects, under the survey and designation. It includes the development of the kind of information to provide details which would allow for both local and national register designation. So what we're seeking is local designation only. We're not seeking national and state levels, which generally require a much more detailed level of description and presentation of material. And those types of designation are not zoning types of designation. They don't regulate the destruction of historic properties or alteration of historic properties in any way. So that's what the local purpose would be. We have a number of advantages potentially here for getting preference. I have not had any discussion with anybody from SHPO, but, you know, they asking basically what resources are available. A town has tremendous resource base to implement things. And just the ability to produce a map, not every municipality has this kind of ability. And by documenting what is there that the town can provide, that can be part of the matching resources that incentivize SHPO to look favorably at, at an application like this. And in addition, it's possible that the Bridgeham Civic Association would provide some contributing funds to the development of the historic district where payments for a consultant or something must be done.
Can I just, can I just chime in really briefly? So I, I like the idea, hey, Ed, hi, Julie, hi, Kelly. So I like the idea. I, I'm just reading through this now, though. I tend to, I tend to agree with Cindy's perspective on this. But, you know, just for the future, as also co liaison with Rick on, for historic preservation, I just would like to see this ahead of time. I know this was sent on September 17th. So if, for the future, I'd love to be able to be involved in some of these discussions ahead of time. Thank you.
So this has been talked about for a while in the Bridgehampton community. It's just, I'm a little, now that we have a map, the size and scope of it is a lot larger than I had expected. I think the outreach is tremendously important ahead of time before we really dig into this. And I think you have a multi, multi-year project ahead of you if we're going to move ahead with this.
It won't be, I mean, we won't see it finished in, in years.
I would just point out that what you see there is much more extensive than what actually would come about. There are probably, originally that list had about 400 properties on. My estimate is about 120 of those will come off, just because the map was an initial crude effort to try and produce some visualization of, of what it would be like.
Kind of gives the scope and shape.
As I said, we only had the list put into the GIS facilities and produced yesterday. So this is without any kind of correction.
Was this put together by year of?
This was me kind of going on the GIS, pulling up each property that.
What year it was built?
Went down and, and determining what the structures that was there, if it was contributing or not contributing.
So you're saying this would be the district, this whole thing?
This is, well, this is the area, right?
The study area. It doesn't mean this would actually be the district, but this would just be the area that they would start for the study and then figure out.
Right. Like Sagaponak Road.
Maybe narrow it down more.
Would that, would that be part of a historic district for residential areas when there aren't enough contributing structures anymore?
I'm just asking, can you, because obviously we have Main Street here and you can see that there's nothing there because that's already a historic district.
Right.
Could you then step back a block and concentrate on that area? You know what I mean?
Right.
Just kind of slowly expand the area?
Yeah. This is just a raw visualization without any documentation of its architectural or historical worth. This was really just to show that we have the resources available in-house, can serve as a way of advancing an application on a preferential basis before SHPO. This map is grossly overextended.
Okay.
And I only saw it yesterday. I haven't been able to even go through.
There's a whole thing here on the right by Puxebog that is, none of that is in Bridgehampton.
Yeah.
Shouldn't, you know, it shouldn't be talked, talked about as having any validity at all, except as a conceptual element of what would come into the formation of a district.
Well, why don't we, I know the timing is such that you need to get working on it, but I think we should read through it. And I, I wouldn't want to, our supporting that to give the impression to people that were, you know, interested in making, calling Bridgehampton an historic district and, and without any choice.
That's why I think this, I think this map will scare a lot of people.
I know. It's one thing if they have the option, but if this is mandated.
And yeah, this is just purely for purposes of just the initial study to just figure out and narrow down what would be the actual proposed, you know, district and to reach out to these people.
Yeah, I mean, this is.
This is not the actual.
These are, there are so many flag lots that, but they're right there on Church Lane, but they're all behind all the historic homes. And in the last 20, 25 years, we've lost a lot of historic structures and, and alterations that are, they're no longer recognizable anymore. So the integrity's been lost. But it was an initial, what's there, right, our resources. We went down to Bridge Lane thinking that would be kind of the cutoff on Ocean Road. And then just, of course, behind Main Street, where you can see much larger density of historic buildings.
Yeah.
That's impressive. We threw that the other day. That's a very impressive area.
And lumber. Yeah, they're really.
What prompted this? Did some people reach out and ask for it or is this just our own concept?
Well, Bridgehampton Historic District and several other historic districts have been outlined for the town in 2014 in its survey of historic resources. Nothing was really done. You know, the ball was dropped on moving forward with it. And the Bridgeham Civic Association and other people generally have been very concerned about the speculative development activity in the community where old houses are bought up and torn down and the property warehoused for basically a future house, McMansion house very often in the neighborhood of Bridgehampton. So this has been under conversation in the community for quite a period of time. And back in April, they knocked on my door, what can be done? And I says, well, begin itemizing what you think are the properties involved and, you know, we'll start working and, you know, perfect an application for a historic district. And then it goes through all the levels of evaluation, public hearing, public notice, public education and outreach then. So that obviously would take at least another year.
I think the new emphasis on it is because after we did the Downtown District, kind of the neighbors right behind, so why weren't we included? And, you know, we're picking up the ball there.
Yeah. East on, on Main Street, you know, as it goes down to Montalk Highway, there were numerous houses along there that were all questioning why they weren't included.
But on the flip side of that, we had residences that were included that asked to be out.
Yeah. Yeah. We were given, we gave them the option to say, yeah.
Then it was focused more on just the commercial Main Street area. And the thought was, well, down the road, we'll look at the residential aspects of it.
Have we looked at the Main Streets in any of our other hamlets? Have we looked at the Main Streets in any of other hamlets?
I have. Yeah.
I mean, are there others that we should be looking at before we start going into residential?
I mean, Revestaburg is mostly residential, but that is one. East Quogue, there's enough, there are enough structures in there to, you know, a lot of it is behind those storefronts.
Because like I know just in East Quogue, the community is really concerned about like the Methodist Church and that becoming a big commercial spot or, you know, they don't want to really see the character change, but.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's, you know, a push for that, you know, if there's support for that in those other. But there are, you know, I even, you know, I even, you know, going through Hampton Bays and it's like, you know, they're all right there for historic districts. But, you know, Bridgehampton seemed to.
Yeah.
To be the template, right? So the flagship of the town doing this, so. And I thought it worked. I thought it went, was received quite well, except for some of those residential people.
I'm fine for doing the grant if we're talking about, you know, doing that to basically get a, like, you know, get a list together of what we're actually looking at and do outreach to those homeowners.
Ed, does the receiving, the potential for a grant to do all the work, does it ultimately then have to be a district?
No. Ultimately, the district is determined by the town board. There's, there's, in theory, this would be trying to produce that outcome.
Right.
But there's no connection.
We get a lot of pushback. We can.
It looks like we're trying to force an outcome by doing this. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, another aspect too is also public education and outreach. So maybe.
I'm fine with doing that.
Yeah, even if it didn't actually become the historic district, right, reaching out to these residential owners, maybe you get a few that might want to plan more.
That they're eligible for like a facade easement or for, you know, a grant or.
Yes. So that aspect also. And also, the town just became, well, not just, but only became a certified local government in 2023. So that's why these, we can pursue these grant opportunities now and they weren't available before. So this is the first one that's.
Well, actually, there were, last year, there was a National Maritime Heritage Grant Opportunity around, but there was no, there was no operating agent to organize it and focus on it. It was, you know, it takes a lot of effort to put these things together. And we don't have a focal point for the Landmarks Board, you know, to basically work with an operating agent. So stuff like that gets passed by. And there are probably other grants as well that are out there. But yeah, this is kind of the second year of opportunity.
So I'm in favor of researching it if we can move forward. I don't know about you guys, but I think you'll find that the, like Cindy said, the zones will shrink. You know, you might see half a mile from Downtown and north and south and go from there. But I think, yeah, I think it's something we should definitely, and the public has asked us to do the outreach. So I think it's a good way to go.
That's for people who see that title. I mean, maybe the title could be a little different because that would be alarming too. You know, town board approves grant application to form a residential district.
Right. We could do, yeah, for public outreach or, you know, we could definitely.
I think we should label it for public outreach.
Yes. Study, not, yeah.
Okay. If you change that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day. Thanks for all the research.
Details of who does it.
Okay.
He just pointed to you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for having us.
All right. So that brings us to the Supervisor Town Council Member Liaison Updates. Rick, do you want to get started this week?
I got three quick ones here. So Saturday, we had the Youth Bureau Car Wash. Marie, I know you were there. Kids did a wonderful job. They had an awesome turnout compared to past years. Very enthusiastic kids. They raised some money for some of their projects that are not funded through the Youth Bureau. So it was great to see all the kids out there. I did have the opportunity to give a board certificate to Justin McCarthy at the Nathaniel Rogers home. And I mentioned it for his work in community service over the years with Kiwanis. But I mention it because if you have not been to the Nathaniel Rogers house, you need to go. I haven't been there since the ribbon cutting when we, you know, opened it. And what a beautiful job they've done inside. The exhibits are tremendous. Right now, in the front room, they do have a scale model of the old Bridgehampton Raceway. Some of the suits that the drivers wore and so on. I got to talk to Connor, who's kind of one of the caretakers throughout the day. And we did talk about some of the challenges with event permits and, and that type of thing there. So it's something that we might address later on. And last but not least, last night, Cindy and I went to Rotary Function. It was their annual Tony Galgano, Tony Galgano Memorial, you know, great guy in the community dinner. And they honored Tony and Joe Villarreali, who owned Hampton Watercraft, who do such a tremendous job in the Hampton Bay community, supporting everything from wrestling. I mean, one of the greatest things they've done, and I did this a few years ago, is they take out veterans, up to 100 veterans, fishing for the day or day and a half and have a great dinner when they come in. It's all on Tony and Joe. So it was great. And just a shout out to the Rotary Club for a great event and Tony and Joe for everything they do for the community.
I heard it was very well attended.
Tremendously well. Tremendously well attended.
That's great.
Nice people.
Thank you. Bill?
I checked on the permits for Longmac, the ballpark up in Flanders. A lot of people are worried about that, the neighborhood. We're still waiting for the permits. The money's guaranteed to be there, and once we get the permits, then they go out to bid and the project will be given.
I broke the news to them that it probably is spring next year, and they were okay with that.
Oh, good.
At this point, as long as it gets done.
Yeah, it's going to get done.
Yeah. And we're still waiting for the permits for Penny Pond Pond.
Yeah, that's too bad. We can't control that.
Can't control it. It was up to me. We'd be down there doing it now.
I know.
We're just about ready to West Hampton Senior and-
Oh, to award the bid, yeah.
Award the bids.
That's great. That's exciting.
Youth Center.
Yeah.
That's good.
Thank you.
Michael, talk about the dog license.
Yeah. Councilwoman McNamara and I had a meeting this week to go over the permitting for the Building Department software, and we're really excited about that project, and it's going to be so helpful in terms of permitting and efficiencies. And so we met with, you know, our IT department and land management, and we're moving forward with the project. So I can't wait to get that in place. And I just was told that our Moody's press release came in, so I've got to finish reviewing it by 12:30 before they make it official, and I can't say what it is, but it's good news. Michael, since you're next up.
Yeah, so just two things. Earlier this week, I teamed up with Town Clerk Sunday Shermyer, Ryan Murphy from Public Safety, and we had a press conference, an event, to license our dogs in the community as well as provide vaccinations with the partnership of Southampton Animal Shelter Foundation. A few dogs stopped by, but we certainly recognize the importance of using this week's event as a PSA, so we're going to be working with CTV and Sun TV to put out the event. I think it was, you know, pretty successful in the sense that we did have a few dogs and, you know, we're getting the word out there on the importance of licensing your pets and all that. We also thank Humane Long Island and the shelter for joining us, all the volunteers as well, and Town Clerk Shermyer's staff for being so helpful.
I think it was a great idea, Michael, and, you know, I'm sure it'll be even more people, once the word gets out, you know, the next time it happens, even more people will come.
Yes, I even brought my dog there.
You did?
Yeah, I brought Henny. He got his, first time he got a license in his life.
Oh.
And we also-
Yeah, I think, I think what we'll do next year is we'll do something with the timing. We'll make it a little bit later in the day. We'll work out a different schedule for next year, but we're definitely going to get the word out with this year's event, so that's good. Also, I just wanted to say that we heard from DPW Commissioner Bartha that he has approved Superintendent McArdle's pilot program for full use on County Road 39. DPW will be reviewing additional parameters of the project and is going to implement it the way that they would like to see it implemented, along with the recommendations that Charlie had made. So I think that's good for, you know, westbound traffic in the afternoon next summer. Hopefully, we'll see some improvement from that. So I just wanted to just go over those couple of things. Thanks.
That's really good news, hearing from Commissioner Bartha, that they're going to work with us on that project.
Yeah, no, I think it's great. I think it's great, and it just shows that the county is really working closely with us, and that's, it's always good to hear.
Thank you. Cindy?
So I have October in addition to being, obviously, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. It is also Substance Use Prevention Month, and one of our partners, I'm, you know, the liaison to Safe in Southampton with HUGS, and Jason Belkin from Hampton Coffee is also a liaison to that group. And Hampton Coffee has partnered with HUGS to do this coffee break campaign. And so on the side of the cup, it says October Substance Use Prevention Month. Let's take a break from things that don't serve us. And the cups have motivational statements like, "Break time, move time, movement recharges your body and brain." It really uses, it impacts mental wellness through positive messaging. So Hampton Coffee, I mean, it's really great of them to do this. They're doing this for the month of October. Every hot, medium beverage comes in one of these cups. They have some other messaging and things at the locations, but-
I've seen some young kids on social media with that.
Yeah, and so it's great because it's, you know, like, it's, you know, a big thing for kids to go get their coffee drinks and for them to get a positive message. Like, one of them says, scroll less.
Mm-hmm. Scroll less.
Tech someone connect. So it's just, it's just a positive thing, and it's a great way to get people thinking of, you know, fun ways to impact their mental wellness, and so I want to thank Hampton Coffee and HUGS for doing this.
Thank you.
I just forgot one last thing. I'm so sorry. One minor, quick announcement that on October 11th at 10:00 a.m. at Agawam Park, there will be an Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, so encourage everybody to go down there, support Chinatown businesses and hang out for the day.
Because he just, because he just brought up Agawam Park, I just wanted to give the Southampton Village Police Department a shout out. My daughter, last Saturday, competed in Hampton's Half Marathon, and they had, I believe, over 2,400 registrants for the race.
Wow.
In addition to all of the people that came with them, like myself and her two friends. And so, I mean, it was a packed house, and the village, I mean, I think the village was there, the sheriffs were there, New York State Troopers were there. They did an amazing job handling the traffic and the influx of people. The businesses did a great job. It was just, it was a phenomenal event, and you would not have known that there was 2,400 people and their support people with them in the village last Saturday. It was amazing.
That's a lot for the police to manage.
Yeah.
Well done.
They do a good job. They've been doing it for years.
They changed the course this year.
How did your daughter do?
She did good. She was about halfway. It was her first time running, so it was, it was actually, I thought she did really well.
Wow, that's great. I'm so proud of her.
All right. Oh, yeah, Tunnel to Towers was on Sunday as well.
Well, if no one else has any other-
Oh, yeah. Shaun Cambridge ran in Tunnel to Towers with Diane Derner, who was our former paralegal in the-
They went with the, yeah, they went with the Sheriff's Department. I went by myself, but, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Shaun was there. It was good.
Oh, that's nice.
It was 40,000 people.
Wow. Amazing.
It's an amazing organization, obviously.
Yeah. How great that it's continued after all these years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can see it's grown. It's just continued. It's just grown and grown.
All right, well, if no one has any other comments, then I move to go into executive session for confidential legal advice, personnel litigation and acquisitions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.